for him and what he does. But Bill, see where I am on this. I watched what happened after Thomas was nominated or pressed for the nomination. And we heard about Farrakhan, we heard about wife beating, weird people that he was around in churches. I mean, the stuff that hit Clarence Thomas was low stuff, day after day after day, for 105 days. Now, that, I think, has to be kept in perspective here. What is it? You know, they wondered why we were, you know, fighting the good fight. If Anita Hill had had to have the opportunity of 105 days of her life examined, and they were beginning to do that, and as I say, throwing stuff over the transom, and other people were using statements, and so I just, I threw a batch of those in the other day. You know, what are we supposed to, how long are you supposed to sit there and watch him get torn to shreds in a process of leaks and surveillance and harsh nasty things that then would be all refuted or covered over two or three days later? What is, what is that about? Is that low blow?
Well, it's the, I mean, if there is one wrong, that doesn't mean you have to commit another wrong.
In this town, they do.
And I'm not asserting that all those are wrongs. I mean, I think the fact of the matter is, as I sat and watched this on television and saw this unfold, where this college professor was charged with fantasizing, with being unbalanced, I thought to myself, is it any wonder that women don't come forward as much as they possibly should? And in fact, if you look at the statistics, only 7% of the women who report in surveys that they're sexually harassed actually file a complaint. And you look at what happened to Professor Hill, and you say, is it any wonder? And you say, no, because it's dangerous. And even, even today, you read in the newspaper that some legislator in Oklahoma now has introduced a bill or intends to try to strip her of her tenured professorship. And what message does that send? That sends a message that you better not come forward. That's the wrong message we should listen to.
Let me, if I may, let me interrupt you both, only because I want to bring more people into the process of discussing this. Way back, when was it, Mr. Bozell, back in August or so, July?
Early September, many years ago.
Early September, it does seem many years ago. Your organization ran an ad. It was only one ad, and I think you only ran it in a few local markets, but it got a lot of, got a lot of coverage around the country. And they were sort of attack ads against Ted Kennedy and Joe Biden and the Senator from California, Senator Cranston. Is it, is it fair to ask you now whether you feel any responsibility for having lowered the tone of what ultimately transpired?
No, I think absolutely not, Ted. We did it because in 1987, there were some special interest groups and some United States senators who destroyed Robert Bork through character assassination. Conservatives did nothing in 1987. In 1991, we decided that some were going to respond, and we ran that ad. However, having said that, never in my wildest nightmares did I expect what was going to happen. And one thing we certainly didn't expect, which I, and it's a question I like to ask the panel, we didn't expect that someone would break the law, that someone would commit a felony. As everyone knows, Senate Rule 29 is very clear about what happens to someone who leaks a document. It says that if it's a staffer, he'll be immediately terminated, and if a senator, he will be expelled. My question to this panel is, is this, it's three-part, very quick. First, do you intend to do everything in your power to see that there is justice delivered to the American people, that we find out who this person was? Secondarily, assuming that the answer is going to be yes, given that unfortunately the Congress has developed a pretty horrible reputation in the last few years for policing itself, given the Keating Five scandal, given Rubber Gate, where the House has said, we're not going to tell the American people who did it, and other such scandals, with all due respect, why should we believe you? And thirdly, and this one's to you, Ted, given your zeal and energy and interest in covering scandals or alleged scandals concerning Republicans, i.e. the October surprise, would you be willing to make a commitment on national television now to apply yourself as diligently to find out who did this?
Well, I'll tell you what, one of the things I'm not going to do on national television is engage in our editorial process with you. However, I'll be happy to talk to you by phone tomorrow morning if you'd like to.
Thank you.
What I would like to get is an immediate response from a man who may not be flattered by the comparison, but in a sense is your counterpart on the liberal side of the agenda, Mr. Neese, if you would like to respond to what you have just heard or make a point of your own, and if you would also identify yourself and your group, please.
Sure. My name is Ralph G. Neese. I'm the Executive Director of the Leadership Conference on Civil Rights, which is a coalition of about 185 national organizations that was established in 1950, 41 years ago. Let me respond in part to Brent Bozell and part to Senator Allen Simpson. Let me start with the Bork battle of four years ago. Contrary to what we heard just a few minutes ago, we maintained at that time, and we still maintain, that what defeated Robert Bork was Robert Bork. He was very clear in his 25 years of speeches and testimony and articles and whatever, that he vigorously disputed, harshly criticized about 60 years of Supreme Court decisions. He himself said before the Senate, when he was up for appointment for the Circuit Court of Appeals, that he thought that were dozens of Supreme Court decisions, fundamental Supreme Court decisions, that had been wrongly decided, should be reconsidered and, if necessary, overturned. We took him at his word, so did the Senate, and so did the country. Robert Bork defeated Robert Bork. With respect to the Clarence Thomas nomination, we took a position on August 7th, after about five weeks of exhaustive examination. We opposed the Thomas nomination on two grounds. Number one, we thought that he was a right-wing conservative, and we opposed the judicial philosophy. We found that he had also harshly criticized a very large number of Supreme Court decisions on privacy, on equal educational opportunity, school segregation, voting rights, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Number two, we criticized him on his public record, that while at the EEOC and at the Department of Education, he at many times refused to enforce laws with which he disagreed and only would enforce those laws with which he did agree. Now, once the hearing started on September 10th, there were other issues that came up with respect to stonewalling on certain constitutional issues and refusing to discuss them, with respect to repudiating many of the past controversial statements.
Let me just interrupt you if I may. One of the things that became clear very early on was, and you were quite right, you did raise all of the issues that you've enumerated, but it was quite clear early on, that if that was all you had, you were going to lose in your opposition to Justice Thomas. And indeed, the question that is being raised now, and since we're here tonight to talk about the process, is it fair? Is it right? Should there be, and I'll bring the question back to our panelists here in a moment, should there be an investigation then, when someone decides, someone working on the Senate staff, that because the issues that you have enumerated aren't working, and it looks as though Judge Thomas is not only going to be confirmed, but confirmed by a fairly substantial margin, that then you start going for the dirt?
Let me complete what I was going to say before, and I think it partially or completely answered what you're asking. When we have a campaign, as we had in both the Bork and Thomas nominations, we focus on a public education campaign with respect to lobbying, media, the grassroots. We focus on those substantive issues. We frame the debate in a substantive way. We do not have investigators. We do not go out and find dirt. If anybody in the coalition finds out information because someone calls them or whatever, it's referred to the appropriate forum.
Were there ever ads placed in newspapers and magazines around the country? I've heard a number of conservative commentators and some newspaper columnists suggest that your organization, among others, placed ads in newspapers around the country, looking for anything that anyone could come up with on Judge Thomas?
The Leadership Conference did not place any such ads.
Anybody, anybody you know about who was working with or for you?
As I understand it, there was an ad in the Legal Times a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago or whatever, basically asking for information. I think it was in response to something that Clarence Thomas had said during the hearings. For example, that he had never discussed Roe versus Wade, I believe, was the jumping off point. And the ads said if anyone had heard anything along those lines, to call. But again, that was not a Leadership Conference advertisement.
A, is that fair game, Senator Specter? And B, should there be, is there going to be an investigation to find out who it was that leaked the?
There, there will be an investigation. There should be. And whoever did it ought to have appropriate action taken against him. When we, when we go back to conduct the investigation, or the FBI does, or the Justice Department does, I'm surprised, as I sit here tonight, to find Mr. Phelps and Mr. Totenberg knew about this in July. And I'm not saying that they should have turned it over to me or to the Judiciary Committee, but they have to make their own judgment about that. But it is not a matter of a double base in a closet, which I think the Judiciary Committee could find or something more. That bears on a question as to how long somebody was trying to get that into the public milieu. Mr. Phelps and Ms. Totenberg didn't uncover that by an investigation, or if they did, I'd like to hear about it. And that bears on, on how much of an effort it took to have Professor Hill come forward, as she finally did. And we tried to find that out in the course of the hearing, as it would bear on her credibility. I'd be glad to yield, Nina.
Thank you. Senator Specter, let me say, I didn't know about it in July. I heard rumors about sexual harassment. I was unable to nail them down. But Tim Phelps says he knew more than I did in July. And so I turn the microphone over to you.
I think maybe, I'd like to just interject a point here, that I think that most senators made the decision on whether to support Clarence Thomas or not, based upon his public record, based upon his professional experience, and based upon whether they agreed with President Bush that he was the best person for the job. I mean, there were, after the hearing process at the end of the, last weekend, maybe two or three votes that would change.
Five, five change.
Five change.
Yeah.
And, you know, it seems to me that we have focused a lot of information and effort on what happened in the last weekend. But I think that the major point is that the process for confirming a Supreme Court justice has got to be based upon experience and character and also willingness to come forward in the process. I mean, I think if you want to know how to improve the process, you can take the PR out of the people, take the PR people out of the process and have somebody come before the committee and let them talk about their legal philosophy, their personal philosophy. That's not what happened in this.
No, I would challenge that.
Political philosophy.
Bill, that's not true.
I'd like to answer, Senator Specter.
I'd just like to get your response, yeah, Ted.
It certainly was an investigation or a journalistic process that was initiated by me and I assume other reporters. Somebody didn't come to me and, and, and from the Senate and say, this is something you ought to look into.
No, but I mean, somebody had to suggest that there was an issue of sexual harassment. You don't just out of the blue start looking into sexual harassment.
You don't do it out of the blue, but you do do it by calling people who used to work at the EEOC, for example, and ask them if there were any problems under Judge Thomas's tenure. I'd like to say that it's not the press's role to bring matters to the attention of the committee, except by, by writing newspaper stories or, or radio stories, for one thing. Secondly, it was pretty clear that Chairman Biden was not terribly interested in looking into this kind of matter.
How do you know?
Because a member of his staff, when I inquired about several other things along the line that have been mentioned here, told me so, that he feels, in fact, he said so the last day, when, when the committee voted seven to seven, he said, and he was talking about this FBI investigation. He, he said, when we go to the floor, let's keep this on the man's record. What's at issue here is not his character.
Ted, on Senator Biden's behalf, he said flatly on the record that he did not pursue it because Professor Hill insisted on confidentiality. But I'd like to hear from the FBI on this. Can you find a double base in the closet? If the newspapers can find it, how about the FBI?
We'll get a microphone over to Mr. Baker. We're going to take a quick break, and by the time we come back, we'll have a microphone in the hands of the Assistant Director. Back in a moment.
How'd you get those flowers in there? Glade potpourri is fresh in the air. Where'd you get them herbs and spice? Glade potpourri, it smells so nice.
And now, there's new, longer-lasting Glade Carpet Potpourri. So now, the freshness lasts even longer. Spray it, shake it, or pump it.
No potpourri is like wine.
You know, it's not something we talk about.
Then don't talk about it.
But when Raymond gets.
Gets what?
You know, constipated.
What?
I give him Phillips Milk-O-Magnesia.
Put that away.
Phillips works overnight and immediately starts soothing the stomach acid Ray sometimes gets when he's feeling.
Oh, Maureen.
Well, it's true, honey.
Only Phillips relieves constipation overnight and soothes your upset stomach.
It can happen to anybody.
But you don't even know these people.
The world's first dynamo was invented by Werner Siemens in 1866. It began the revolution that brought electricity to everyone. That was then, this is now. The generation, distribution, and control of energy are at the heart of Siemens today, where you work, live, and play. And with 35,000 people at work nationwide, Siemens is leading the way into the next century. Siemens: Precision Thinking. We built the new Camry with many exotic materials, including the one you see here, the road. You see, by putting insulating panels made from asphalt in the new Camry, we were able to help keep something else out: noise. We just couldn't leave well enough alone.
Test drive the all-new Toyota Camry. Roomier, safer, quieter, and more powerful at your Toyota dealer now.
Halloween is just around the corner, and your local Wendy's restaurants at Channel Five have teamed up to help your children have a safe and enjoyable Halloween evening.
That's right. If you have children, we're inviting you to stop by any of your local Wendy's restaurants and pick up one of these useful bags.
They're absolutely free, and you can use them for trick-or-treating or stuff them with paper for a great Halloween decoration.
The bags are plastic, strong, and waterproof, and best of all, they hold lots of treats.
So join Channel Five and Wendy's and have a safe and happy Halloween.
This ABC News special edition of Nightline, a town meeting continues. Once again from Washington, Ted Koppel.
We had a question for the Assistant Director of the FBI, Bill Baker. I guess the, in essence, the question was, if Newsday was resourceful enough back in July to start calling staffers at the EEOC and saying, what do you know, why wasn't the FBI?
I can't address what we didn't come up with. I can't tell you the scope of the investigation, and it was extremely thorough. In these type of spin, and may I describe that, that's a special inquiry investigation, we contact at least 35 people in this type of a case, many more. When the candidate is a candidate for the high bench for the judiciary, we also look into capability professionally, which we don't do in other type background investigations. And so, we contacted many people who were familiar and worked with the candidate at various times in his life. The fact that we did not interview Ms. Hill, we didn't interview many other people.
No, I didn't get the impression from Tim Phelps that early on in July, he had interviewed Ms. Hill. I got the impression that someone over at EEOC told him, well, there seems to have been some question about, maybe it was sexual harassment, maybe it wasn't. And on the basis of that, eventually, he tracked down Anita Hill.
Well, I can't get into the details of the report as we gave it to Justice, the White House, and then back to the committee. I mean, what we found in that report was provided to the committee. And when further allegations were made, we tested those allegations, interviewed Professor Hill, and passed the results of that back to the committee.
Back to the committee or the White House?
To the committee, in the way I described.
Through the White House.
Justice, White House, committee.
Okay. Eleanor Holmes Norton, you were at one point the Chairman of the EEOC. See if you can help me bring this around now to a question of process. Is it the process that is flawed, or is it something else?
I think it is the process, Ted. And I'd like to say that as useful as I think these postmortems are, and I think we're destined to hear them ad nauseam, they do not necessarily guarantee reform. And that is what I think Americans from all parts of the political spectrum are essentially demanding. What I fear is that the Senate, besieged from all sides, plummeted ultimately with suggestions, will kind of patch it up in time for the next nominee, and we won't have any systematic reform. I'd like to suggest that, I think, if you will forgive me, that the Senate may need help, that the Senate itself has been so polarized that if it tried to study itself or reform itself, it might not, it might not succeed, and that the Senate might, might consider looking to others that might help it, such as knowledgeable outside experts that would help it really do a objective postmortem of a process that I think has failed not entirely because of the actors. I think it is because it is a process invented, invented decades ago, not brought into the 21st century, that has simply collapsed of its own weight in the post-Watergate period, when people look more closely and when there are more actors in the process.
Let me, if I may, bring Ed Rollins into the discussion here. At one point, you were a senior operative for the Reagan-Bush campaign. You have been involved in politics a great deal of your life. I am struck by something that Brent Bozell said before, and I hope I'm not doing him or his words an injustice when I condense it by saying, after what they did to Bork, we felt not only justified, but that we had to do what we did with those ads. And there is sort of a sense of a snowball effect, that everyone is sort of pointing back historically, some are pointing back a year, two years, five years, however long it may be, and using that then to justify what is certainly effective. And that is this negative politicking, whether it is done in the, in the political forum or in the, in the forum of the Senate Judiciary Committee. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, first of all, Ted, I think there's a lot to that. And first of all, I think we need to discuss with a little honesty here tonight. Most of us in this room have either been on the same side or on opposite sides in a whole variety of battles. If you invited this group of people here to dinner party, you would probably end up with eight fistfights and probably the most miserable dinner fight, party that you've ever had in this town. We are in a battle for philosophy, and we're in a battle of partisanship. And obviously, each cycle takes on something different. There were two battles of recent, recent vintage that I think were the epitome of what went on. The late John Tower, Chairman of the Senate Armed Services Committee, a very respected member of the Senate for the 24 years that he served there. No senator ever stood up and said when he was Chairman of the Senate Armed Services Committee that he was not worthy to be in that very exalted position. But yet, they gutted him in a partisan fight, and many people who were his colleagues and probably fellow drinking companions took him apart. Ralph here said that they attempted to take Judge Bork apart because Judge Bork, who is the foremost conservative scholar of our time, and obviously someone that Ronald Reagan wanted to put on the court first, and if he would have made the first nominee, would be sitting there today and made Sandra Day O'Connor the last nominee, she would be sitting there today. But for whatever reason, they chose to reverse it. We're in a philosophical battle, and I think that Clarence Thomas, in this particular game, was someone who the President wanted to put on the court. Many people in this room did not want him to be on this court. Many fellow Democrats who voted for Clarence Thomas didn't do so out of commitment to his philosophy, but did so because they're scared to death of the voters back home, and it just so happens that many of them are up in this particular cycle. We are in a political game. It's gotten very nasty. I'm not advocating in any way, shape, or form that it should continue to be nasty. But we're not judging people on their qualifications. We are in a partisan game. We are all in it. We have divided government. We control the White House as Republicans. The Democrats control the Senate and the House. And anytime they can get a political advantage, it's going to happen. And I think the American public is getting more and more frustrated with it, and sooner or later, they'll get turned off and vote a bunch of them out of office.
Senator Simon, we're going to come back to you in a moment. I'm afraid we have to take another break. The hour is late, but when we come back, I would like to try to focus the discussion insofar as it is humanly possible on remedying the process. If it's broken, how does it get fixed? Back in a moment.
This ABC News special edition of Nightline, a town meeting, has been brought to you by Charles Schwab.
I've got a 6:00 AM flight. I've got to get some Z's.
Nytol safely helps you fall asleep fast, so you can get your Z's. Nytol or maximum strength Nytol.
Nytol will help you get your Z's.
Introducing Glade Plug-Ins Potpourri.
Plug it in, fresh in the air. Plug it in, fresh in everywhere.
Plug into freshness with Glade Plug-Ins now in potpourri.
Plug it in, plug it in.
Champagne is now being served on the afterdeck. Lobster is now being served on the promenade deck. Colombian coffee is now being served in the stockroom lounge.
No wonder so many people's preferences lean toward 100% Colombian coffee. It's the richest coffee in the world, and picked by Juan Valdez.
Today, TechTred Shoe Corporation announced a major retail expansion in 25 U.S. cities.
When I see a company that looks like a good investment, I check it out myself.
We make it easier to follow your own lead.
At Charles Schwab, I can get quotes, financial news, and when I make a trade, commission savings.
Always there to give you just the help you need.
Help yourself at Schwab today.
Hi, I'm Terry Krantz from Terry Krantz Crossroads in Fort Dodger. We have some incredible deals on used cars. That's right, folks, we have some incredible deals on used cars like these.
Terry, I've got this '89 Calais, well-equipped, only $55 down, $159 a month, or for you cash buyers, $69.90.
Terry, I've got this '87 Nova with automatic and air, $55 down, $119 a month, or cash, $39.90.
Stop by Terry Krantz Crossroads in Fort Dodge, or call their hotline, 1-800-433-Iowa, today.
Listen. Listen to the sounds of a whole other road. Apple cinnamon Cheerios.
Real apples, whole grain oats, and cinnamon make every oat taste as good as it sounds.
Listen to the sounds of a whole other road. Apple cinnamon Cheerios.
This ABC News special edition of Nightline, a town meeting continues. Once again from Washington, Ted Koppel.
Let me begin by warning our affiliates, we're going to go a little bit beyond our scheduled off time of 1:00 Eastern Time. And I would like to begin with a young man standing in the, in the back. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Tevi Troy. I'm a recent college graduate working in Washington. And I know all of us in this room have had boyfriends or girlfriends, and if the process is such that a previous significant other can come out of nowhere and derail you, and this happened to both Professor Hill and to Justice Thomas, then that will be, have a significant chilling effect upon young people who want to go into public service. How do, how do you think we can remedy, remedy this?
Senator Simpson, I think you've got the beginning. You've got the beginnings of what you believe to be a solution.
Well, yeah, I'd like to go to that. It's been interesting, and we could all go to these things. But I tell you, I think there's a start the committee could do, and that is to have executive sessions. I was interested in that.
By which you mean closed session?
Yes, I mean closed session. But you see, then we will be assailed in that process. So the people say they want that two to one. I just was interested in that, and saw that indication. But we should have it, and we should have that with very limited staff and very limited handlers with regard to the nominee, and have half a day, or a day, or two days, the Intelligence Committee does this, and the Ethics Committee does this. And I think it would be well for the Judiciary Committee to do this. That would be a start.
Senator Simon. First, I agree with Allen in terms of a charge like sexual harassment. That kind of a charge, I think we should have a closed session. Everything else ought to be out in the public. Second, Ed Rollins talks about this partisan fighting being inevitable. Justice Scalia was confirmed unanimously. Justice Kennedy was confirmed unanimously. If the President would follow the advice part of the advice and consent and consult with members of the Senate, there's no reason we have to have these partisan wranglers. Let me just ask you, and I'll pose the question to you, Senator Simon. You say you agree that on questions of, for example, sexual harassment, that they ought to be discussed in executive session, that is, in closed session. They were, and you guys didn't do a very good job. You didn't pursue it. It wasn't until the story broke that you took it seriously. It wasn't until the story broke that you took it seriously. I mean, that really is the rap on the Judiciary Committee. The answer is, they were not discussed in an executive closed session where all of us were there talking about it. Until the person making the charge was willing to at least come to an executive session like that, it was not possible. But I think clearly that would have improved the process this time. I think Allen is correct. I'll come to you in just a moment. EJ Dionne in the back.
Yeah, I'd just like to suggest that maybe by focusing so narrowly on process, we might be missing the point, that really, for 30 years, we've had almost a cultural civil war in the country over some of the most divisive questions there can be: race, feminism, abortion, things like that. And when you have a cultural civil war, people feel a sense of righteousness in which they do play to win at all costs, because they think they're right to play to win at all costs. I think that we seem to have a particular problem as a society dealing with these questions. The Europeans have dealt with abortion, I think, in a much more civilized way than we've managed to do it. And I think people kind of run away from this process, because when we have constant cultural arguments and moral arguments in government, government doesn't look like it's settling people's problems. And so I guess the kind of question I'd like to pose is, do the senators really think we can find a better way to talk about these divisive moral and cultural questions? Because I think until we do, we're going to see fights like the one we just saw over and over again.
Senator Bradley.
Yes, I think that is absolutely the most essential thing. You have to be able to sit down with somebody you disagree with on a very divisive issue, on a very potentially inflammatory issue, and have a candid discussion. I mean, for example, the issue of race, which is what Cliff Alexander raised at the beginning of this session. The fact of the matter is that most politicians don't want to talk about race. Race was a real element in the Clarence Thomas nomination, even though the President of the United States denied it was. And the issue was not really confronted. For example, in the questioning session, when Clarence Thomas came in and charged racial stereotyping, he was on a little thin ice, because he did not criticize or raise his voice when his president, George Bush, used the ultimate racial stereotype, Willie Horton.
That was Al Gore that brought that up first. That was Al Gore that brought that up first.
In order to get the victory. That is the point. And unless you're able to focus on somebody's record without people being defensive, that also is a problem. For example, it is very true that George Bush in 1964 opposed the Civil Rights Act that allowed Clarence Thomas to go to an integrated restaurant in Pinpoint, Georgia. Without that act, that would never have happened. The point is that if you've taken a set of positions, you have to hold those positions, and you have to be willing to discuss those positions. That is the beginning of the process.
Well, that's the, may I say, that's the essence of creating the racist problem, right there. George Bush is not racist. How can you possibly keep putting that into the system?
But Allen, he has never shared with the American public why he opposed the 1964 Civil Rights Act. I have never heard him say why he did it. Was it a simple political act?
I don't know, but there were a lot of people that opposed it, and you could go look at them, but the real issue on the Willie Horton thing, that came out of the Democratic primary, and the sooner we put that to bed, the better off we'll be. That is racism to keep bringing it up, sticking it in there when it came from Al Gore.
Al Gore.
Roger Wilkins.
That's right. Go look it up. He brought it up in the primary.
Well, I have a lot of Republican literature that had Willie Horton's picture.
Well, then, no one ran the picture of Horton until the media ran the first picture of him as being black, and from there it went downhill.
Gentlemen, may I just, no, no, just to make an observation. I mean, do you see what's happening to us, even here? And we're trying hard to be nice to each other, right?
Yeah, racism.
No, no, wait a second. It is almost like the Israeli-Palestinian debate, where eventually you get back to the time of Abraham, and, you know, if you're going to say, we're going to go back 100 years, we're going to go back 1,000 years, at some point, if the process is going to be improved, don't we have to draw a double line under what has happened and move forward?
Yeah, but how can anybody say that somebody, we're going to do a civil rights bill now, and Jack Denforth is going to be working with Ralph Meehan's, and he will. I mean, that's the way that that bill will go.
Go ahead, Roger.
And I just say, what is the good of trying to prove that George Bush is racist?
Nobody said racist.
You said he brought racism into the game. He brought up race.
I've said he's not above using race to get votes.
And then you talked about Willie Horton Bill. That's a racist stereotype of the first water, an ugly one, ugly one.
I'm glad that that is finally on the record.
But it wasn't brought up by George Bush. It was brought up by the Democratic primary, and then the media published the face of the man, and that was it.
Allen, that was brought up in the Democratic primary. It was made it right.
Ted, could I? You were there, Paul.
Gentlemen, Roger Wilkins.
It seems to me that the four senators, two of whom are good friends of mine, have just proved Cliff Alexander's point. And it's a point, it was a powerful point, the most apparent thing that's wrong with the process is something that is not apparent to anybody. Does anybody believe that that committee would have made exactly the same judgment on Professor Hill's charges if instead of 14 white men, you had 12 white men, Eleanor Norton and Maxine on that committee? The result would have been totally different. But 14 men made the decision that this charge of sexual harassment need not be explored further. Now, you can say all you want, Senator Specter, about, well, you know, she didn't want her name out, or this or that. I can assure you, if there had been women on that committee, you'd have had a different result. Secondly...
Folks, I'll tell you what, I don't have a gavel "thank God," but let's, you know, whichever way you feel in this thing, let's just let folks start without a paver.
Secondly, Ben has exercised his great talent of extracting the facts from a situation and creating a fable. When Clarence Thomas talked about lynching, he was talking about race. He wasn't talking about anything else, and everybody who saw it, everybody who heard it, everybody who saw the words, everybody knew that he was talking about race. And I will say to you that it would have been different had there not been 14 white men facing that single black man. Visually, even though he had no facts to make it look like a lynching, visually, it looked like it was a lynching. If, however, you had had these two black women, Clifford, Bob Woodson, Mr. Brown, you would have had a totally different makeup, you'd have had a totally different discussion, and you four would have had a very different discussion about race had a black person been participating in it. So I guess I want to ask Mr. Rollins and Mr. Brown whether indeed the parties in this country are happy with the fact that the women who watched a vote, that they cared about a lot, had to hear about 45 votes cast before Senator Kassebaum cast a vote, and when it's all over, two women had cast votes. And we blacks, watching a vote that meant a lot to us, watched 98 white people and two Asians make a vote. Are the parties interested? Do you senators care? We care.
If I could respond to that.
Senator Specter.
Well, we make no apology for the fact that the 14 of us are men and not African-Americans. I have African-Americans on my staff, men and women, with whom I consulted to try to understand the issue as well as I could. When Mr. Dionne raises a question about how we're going to deal with these issues in a civilized way, and I would comment on what Mr. Rollins has said, I do not think it is a political brass knuckles fight. Judge Bork was not rejected because of the ads which somebody put on. Judge Bork was rejected because his view of original intent was something that most of us felt nobody could figure out, and if you could figure it out, you couldn't apply it to 1987 when he was up. And when you had Judge Thomas, it might have been better to have Bill Coleman, but Judge Thomas, by one of his biggest opponents, Professor Drew Days of the Yale Law School, who opposed Judge Thomas, said he was intellectually and educationally qualified. And I pressed Judge Thomas very hard on the issues of affirmative action and executive control and individual rights, and I came to the conclusion that he was successful, that he was qualified to be on the Supreme Court. But we considered the merits of those matters, and we still are struggling with them. And many of us are prepared to deal with the merits.
Senator Simon, and then I do want to go to Harriet Woods, who has been standing most patiently there for most of this broadcast. We're going to come to you in just one minute. Senator Simon. I think we have, if we're going to make progress, we have to draw that line that you're talking about, not simply regurgitate everything. Roger Wilkins has hit the nail right on the head. Now, we can't change that overnight, but it does mean we have to be, the four of us and our colleagues in the Senate, have to be much more sensitive than we have been. Let me please just, Senator Bradley, I come to you. Go ahead, Ms. Woods.
Well, all I have to say is, you still don't get it, do you, senators? You still don't get it. You've just heard, I think, a major point. Women were not part of this process, and the country would have been saved a lot if there had been somebody who would have been alert to, insensitive to the importance of this issue, someone who would have insisted that when you did have an investigation, you could have had expert witnesses on things like sexual harassment. So you wouldn't be saying even today, my goodness, a proof against her, she didn't come forward for 10 years. Now, the tidal wave that hit the Capitol of women reacting to the image of Adida Hill and to their concern that 98 men and two women might take a vote without seriously considering this, were politically homeless women who were saying, we aren't there, and no one is speaking for us or understanding us. What we want is a thoughtful investigation. And speaking to process, what did they get? They didn't get a thoughtful investigation. They got political grandstanding, hectoring of witnesses, and what I can only say, Senator Specter, with all due respect, many of us felt was an abuse of power. They saw a media manipulation of message which, yes, may have resulted temporarily in a poll that shows women sympathize with that image that they saw there, but you haven't gotten to a final question, which it seems to me is part of the process. You're still talking about us, mainstream groups, and there are a lot of us here, as special interests. You locked us out of the process. You are men and white men, and you didn't even want to listen to us to find out the questions that needed to be asked so you could do a good job. You just wanted to get it out of the way. We indeed were in a position of slipping even questions over the transom. So what I have to ask you is, if you look at us as the enemy, if you think the process is you sitting behind a desk with no women there, no sensitivity to our issues, how do you expect to be able to deal with the issues of appointees may come before you, who, without the ability to reflect those interests? I can assure you that there are a lot of us who are going to try to make sure that there are some women senators there, and will try to plug into this interest that's going around the country. But in terms of the process, it was disconnected, it seems to me, from the life experience of the persons whose allegations you were trying to examine.
Ms. Woods, let me, while these four gentlemen are trying to decide which of them is going to respond to you, let me ask you a question. There has been some talk in recent days of the formation of a women's party, simply for the reason that neither the Republican Party nor the Democratic Party has been sufficiently responsive to the needs of women in America. Is that a real political possibility?
It's not on our agenda. We are a bipartisan group that indeed tries to work within the system, that tries to get, and has been reasonably successful at the local and state level, in getting women into public office. We want the system to work, but until the point where we, because of a number of issues which we all understand of the catch-up game and the difficulty in breaking through that glass ceiling of power, we need not to be told that we don't need your viewpoint, that we are sensitive to it, even though they clearly pointed evidence that they weren't. We need them to be honest to get this dialogue we've talked about, that there are some sensitivities we have to get on race, on gender, that we don't have. I saw none of that in that process.
I must say, well, go ahead, Senator Bradley.
If I could, I think that Harriet Has and other speakers have talked about sexual harassment as an example. What it's an example of is the powerful, the more powerful, taking advantage of, the less powerful, from a position of power. Now, that is not only applicable to sexual harassment. That is also applicable throughout our society. If you look at, for example, the vote as the fulcrum, it's the way things change in our country. You have a vote, you cast a vote, maybe policies change, maybe other people are in the Senate. But if you had an election, and everybody of voting age wanted to go vote, 1/3 of the voting age population in this country could not vote because they would not be registered. And those people are disproportionately poor and minority. So if what we're interested in is enfranchising people and letting their voice be heard so that institutions that are elected institutions will reflect those voices, then there has to be a high priority to making sure that the third who now don't participate have an opportunity to participate.
Yes, sir. Would you be good enough to introduce yourself?
My name is Bob Woodson, president of the National Center for Neighborhood Enterprise. I take exception to Roger Wilkins' description of Clarence Thomas's use of the word political lynching as limiting it to race. Clarence Thomas's problem was, and what he was challenging, is he was too black, too Republican, too conservative, and his opposition was based upon his ideological position. And what he was, he became a surrogate for millions of disaffected blacks who feel they are unrepresented by the traditional liberal Democrats. And he gave voice to this, an expression to this. Also, I think when a liberal Democrat, be they black or white, is guilty of sexual misconduct with women, there is not the outrage from the national organization of women. Women do not walk out of Congress and demand that this person be expelled from the Congress. Instead, they campaigned for that person's reelection, as in the case of Congressman Gus Savage. But when it came to Clarence Thomas, a man accused of misconduct, there was this moral outrage, and I think it's this moral inconsistency by those who purport to represent the interests of women and the interests of minority. This is what provoked the outrage of the black community to the point where they overwhelmingly supported this man when those who purportedly represent them suggested they should think and act otherwise. And I think to the extent that forums can be provided so that those people in those neighborhoods and in rural communities who are not represented are given an opportunity to voice their opinion. I would like to see forums of low-income women to discuss what standards and policies they would like to see imposed, dealing with sexual harassment. Because obviously, the women who purport to represent them in this room are out of touch with the folks in the neighborhoods.
All right, Congresswoman Maxine Waters.
Let me just say that...
Cliff, if you could hold on just one second, and let Congresswoman Waters...
I think some very powerful statements have been made about race and the unwillingness to discuss this problem that we're confronted with in our society. And one more time, Senator Specter passed over it and just said, he does not apologize for being a white male, and I don't think anybody asks for an apology for your being a white male. I think what we're asking you to do is take a look at yourself and take a look at this august body, and understand that it is not representative. There is not the diversity there that can cause the decisions to be made that will be in the best interest of this entire country. You can do something about it. The first thing that you should do is support voting rights for Washington, D.C. In doing that, we could immediately, and most probably, get someone of color, perhaps two people of color, we could get a female, we could get a male, we could immediately inject some color and perhaps another woman into the United States Senate, and that should be done right away. And if you really, all of you, mean what you say about understanding that this is a problem and wanting to do something about it, that can be done. Let me just close by saying this. The business about Clarence Thomas, who he is, what he cares about, I don't think most people in the debate really know who Clarence Thomas is.
most people in the debate really know who Clarence Thomas is. Certainly, they could not have learned from the confirmation hearings. It was not drawn out. The information was not extracted. Many of the people in the South who are supporting him do not know that he's opposed to civil rights. They really don't know that he's opposed to affirmative action. They really don't know what he's all about. They really don't understand what is being said when they talk about him being a right-wing conservative or having aligned himself. They really don't know that his sister that he talked about, being on welfare, is an example of what he cares about, people who are in need and who would ask this government for a few resources in order to help them until they could do better. When that debate really takes place, I am confident, I am confident that the people will begin to understand that perhaps they made a mistake. I would like that debate to take place in the neighborhoods, in the communities with poor women, with welfare women, and I guarantee you, we would have a different opinion.
Ms. Waters, if I could just interject this point. I think part of the problem this evening is that so many important issues that are legitimately important issues are being raised here, but what we're attempting to do is to focus on the nomination and confirmation process, which everyone seems to agree while pointing fingers in a dozen different directions, has somehow gone badly awry. And during the last few minutes, the hour really is late, during the last few minutes of conversation that we have left here, I'd like to urge you, those of you who are still standing or about to stand, and the gentlemen who are on the panel here with me this evening, that we focus more precisely on what, if anything, can be done to remedy the process. Now, Cliff Alexander, I told you that we would come back to you, and we do.
The remedying of the process, I still contend, has to do with the people who are in the process. As we've had this discussion today, as we've talked about issues of race and harassment in the workplace, it became readily apparent that members of the Senate are really unqualified to discuss sexual harassment. They showed it significantly, not because they were men, that was not the issue. The issue is they did not know the law of sexual harassment, they did not know the workplace of sexual harassment, they did not seem to know that when women come forward, they get further harassed. If you have a system, you cannot correct, in this sense, the confirmation system unless you correct the people who are part of that confirmation system. I could tell you about having meetings in Cameron, there could be counsel instead of senators asking questions, but that does not get to the essence of what is wrong in this democracy, and that is the people who allegedly represent this country don't seem to have any interest in the people they represent.
You know, let me challenge that.
I'd love to hear it, sir.
Yes, please. I get trashed by the zealous women's groups. I happen to be pro-choice. I happen to believe a woman should have the choice. That doesn't even earn me a single point with them. They are after me. I could never, ever do anything because I am a Republican from Wyoming. That's enough. Now, that may not sound to be the case, but that's the case. Let me tell you, sir, we do understand the law. Most of us are lawyers, and Paul is a good locker room lawyer. And I'll tell you what we do understand, and I hope you will hear this. We understand that there isn't a single statute of limitations on a sexual harassment charge over 120 days in either the federal or any state government, and we now are faced with a charge that's eight or 10 years old. Now, wait just a second, you had two licks here tonight.
Perhaps somebody ought to speak to you the way you talk to them. Wait a second. Let me tell you something for a change.
All right.
Let me tell you, had Anita Hill decided to file a complaint, she didn't have a job to get back, so she wouldn't have gotten...
That is not true, sir. That is not true, sir. That's in the record as not being true.
Let me finish, if you don't mind.
Yes, but you've had two shots, and I've been sitting listening quite courteously.
For every shot, every shot I'm getting, you've had 100, sir. And you have 100 more, because after this show, there are no black people in the Senate, so don't worry about us. We're through after this show.
Well, that brings another racist aspect to it.
Yes, another racist aspect.
That's right. That's what it does.
As you described it.
That's right.
As you described it, Senator.
That's right.
Now, if we can get to sexual harassment, under the laws that you have generally not worked very hard to effect, no damages could come to the Anita Hills of this world, could they?
I put in a bill that doubles the penalty on sexual harassment long before this nomination ever came up.
And what are the damages that you're...
Hundred thousand bucks and reinstatement and a lot of other things. You might read it. I know, but it comes from a Neanderthal, you see.
Is that legislation now, sir?
It comes from a Neanderthal from Wyoming, and you wouldn't want to look at it too closely, but I can tell you this, sir.
That is your own self-description, not mine.
We do know what the laws of sexual harassment are in the United States. And she had four lawyer friends who were not good enough to tell her what to do when she went to them, and that was proven in the panel. What kind of a support system is that?
If you expect every person who has been harassed in this society to come forward, you have no understanding of the workplace in this society, because their own future is put in jeopardy. And any lawyer who practices in this field will tell you that, sir. That's the practicality of it.
60% of my staff are women.
It would be nice, that's wonderful. And some of my best friends are men.
Yeah, well, that's another. That's another. You see, it's no good to do this when all you do is hear people talking emotion, fear, guilt, or racism.
It's no good to do it with you, sir. You're the very best at it.
Emotion, fear, guilt, or racism, and you're asking how to repair the process? If everything you do is just drive it to that, it'll never get resolved, but I'm here to listen.
In fairness, Senator, I'm the one who's trying to ask the question of how the process
gets repaired. Senator Simon.
Yes, and it seems to me that there is one thing that can be improved here in the process, and that is when we have a sexual harassment charge, why not get an expert or two to come in and tell the members of the committee, this is the pattern on sexual harassment? We didn't do that. Now, that's easy in hindsight. We should have done it. I should have suggested it. But I think Cliff Alexander has a very good point there.
Well, there were some of us who wanted to do that.
I don't remember you suggesting that.
Two of the 14 senators did not want to, well, short memory. Two of the 14 senators on Sunday did not want to limit the witness list, and I was one of them, and Senator Brown was the other. We felt that we wanted to go ahead and hear more witnesses, and we were charged with returning it to finish it up for a vote at 6 o'clock on Tuesday, and we had to finish by 6:00 on Monday to give our colleagues 24 hours' notice, and two of the 14 of us didn't want to do that. We said, let's go back and let's get more time. But when you talk about representation in the District of Columbia, I've supported that for years. There are Republicans. I spent a lot of time as chairman of the Appropriations Committee on the District of Columbia and have supported that. And there will be African-Americans if D.C. becomes a state. But there are Republicans who want to do that. And I have great respect for Mr. Alexander, but there are some of us who understand some things about the law.
Bruce Fein.
Yes, Ted and the senators, I have two earthbound proposals for reforming the process. One, to safeguard the integrity, why not require secrecy oaths of the members of the committee and staffers, as is now required of House Intelligence Committee members, and may, if the Senate approves, as Senator Bradley notes, may be required of Senate Intelligence Committee members? Make it a crime to violate that oath. Have the crime investigated by the independent counsel rather than staffers of the FBI. Lawrence Walsh, after having dropped the Ollie North allegations, has a lot of gold-plated time on his hands. Require a Senate vote on expulsion of any senator who violates the secrecy oath, and a permanent disbarment from federal government employment by the staffer who violates the oath. And finally, for 19 years, the United States Supreme Court has stated there is no newsman's privilege against a bona fide criminal investigation. We had in the Senate Judiciary Committee hearing room persons who knew, who had leaked the document that created so much consternation. There's never any effort to actually discover the source of that leak through persons who had evidence, and the Supreme Court has said there is no newsman's privilege against a criminal violation. Secondly, why shouldn't we go back to the days of Abraham Lincoln, who in 1864, in nominating a chief justice of the United States Supreme Court, said, "We cannot ask a man what he would do, and if we should do so, and he answered, we should despise him for it." Under that standard, we produce justices like Oliver Wendell Holmes, Louis Brandeis, Benjamin Cardozo, Charles Evans Hughes, Harlan Fisk Stone, and others. Under the current case-specific inquisitions, which I think corrupts the integrity of the answering, we've got a court of mediocrities, and it seems to disprove Darwin's survival of the fittest theory when we compare the current court with the court 50 years ago. Why not desist and go back to what Abe Lincoln taught?
All right, folks, I'll tell you what. We've got time for a couple more comments from the floor, then I'm going to ask the distinguished senators here to sum up for the evening. I really think it is time that we try to bring this process to a conclusion, at least tonight. Richard Benveniste, I don't know where you're coming from, but please, go ahead.
Well, I'm not coming from Darwin. I'll get back to some of the practical things that you are eliciting from us, and I'm one of the people who was sitting back watching television and saying, holy cow, what is this spectacle? And I think it was the spectacle atmosphere that traumatized America during this process. Things were going along, I think, pretty much as the system intended them to until we got to the Anita Hill allegations. And here we had some kind of a trial of sexual harassment superimposed on an extraordinarily politicized process. And this system was not designed to operate in this fashion. This was not a forum to have a trial. The time period was remarkably truncated for the airing of these kind of issues, as Senator Specter and others has said. This is not the way you go about trying a case of sexual harassment. And I think some of the problem that we have seen in the way this process was carried out was because there was a truncated period of time superimposed on a process that should have been allowed to be investigated, to be held through orderly hearings in a way that at least could get to resolution of this problem.
Well, I mean, the process wasn't really truncated. What had happened was the process was over, and then an additional process was sort of tacked on to the end of it.
Exactly. But once there was a determination to investigate and air these charges, there needed to be a proper period of investigation where you could focus on what the allegations were and an orderly presentation, not this four or five o'clock in the morning presentation, not this kind of forum where some people were advocates, some were judges, some were potted plants. Nobody had in mind really the way to adjudicate these charges, because that's not the forum to adjudicate charges like it. And if we're going to look at the future and we're going to make these kind of judgments about the character of our judicial nominees, then if we're going to air this, let's do it in an orderly, deliberate way. Why the rush to judgment? I think that skews the process.
May I ask you, we have a number of legal scholars sitting here. Judge Sporkin, you're about to doze off, so let me put this question to you. Let me put this question to you, and if someone could just hand a microphone to Judge Sporkin. All along here, and I ask you to address this and bring some of your considerable judicial learning to the answer. The point has been raised repeatedly throughout this hearing that a man must be considered innocent unless there is a preponderance of evidence that proves him guilty, which, of course, is the standard by which a man is judged in one of our courts. But what, after all, was confronting Justice Thomas or Judge Thomas was not the prospect of going to jail or the prospect of execution, but the prospect of being appointed to the Supreme Court. Is that, I ask you from a judicial point of view, is that an appropriate standard?
Well, again, it's not a judicial issue. This is, you're in a political process, and the senators made their own determination. And if you listened to the debate on Tuesday, everyone had a different standard. Some said the presumption was that if they could make up their mind, then it goes against them. Some said it went for them, and really, that's for them to do.
Well, maybe that's a question I should be raising, then, if you care to answer it, or maybe if the senators care to answer it. Should there be a common standard that is agreed upon before the next nominee is brought forward, so at least that we can say, we know what the standard is? We're not going to change it according to each particular nominee.
I don't think you can do that. I really, I really think it's a political process. The only conceivable thing to do is say that if two people are telling a story that is directly contrary, there is a political process to deal with that. You send it to a grand jury and let them determine who's telling the truth. Everybody was sworn. That, if you want to get the judicial process in, that's what you do. But the political process is altogether different.
Okay. The gentleman in the bank has been standing here for about the last hour. Go ahead, sir.
Clint Bullock from the Institute for Justice. Clarence Thomas is my mentor and a friend. I lived and died with him in this process, but the process ultimately worked, in my opinion, and the reason that it did is that it did not any longer take into over account views like those of Maxine Waters and Harriet Woods, but rather began to reflect the overwhelming will of men and women, blacks and whites in this country, by two to one, three to one, in favor of Clarence Thomas. Now, what was on trial was not just Clarence Thomas, but the United States Senate. Instead of nitpicking about the process, we have to ask, is there a less credible body on earth to judge the character of a person than the United States Senate? I think what outraged Americans was, if a woman is sexually harassed by a senator, she can't take him to court. The Senate has exempted itself from sexual harassment laws. The spectacle of Ted Kennedy passing judgment on Clarence Thomas for sexual harassment was too much for Americans to take. And so I think that we need to look at the ethics of the Senate as a whole before it will ever have the credibility to judge the character of a person.
I just want to move around the room quickly. Ma'am, would you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Anne Bryant with the American Association of University Women, and I would disagree that we should have Supreme Court nominees elected by polls. That's for sure what we don't want. I do not think that the advice and consent process is a problem. I think what is a problem is the caliber of nominees that have been put forward. And the fact is, even the American Bar Association said he was less than highly qualified. And I think the problem is, we've got a management problem by the White House that has dictated to these nominees that they cannot answer questions. When a man can't answer a question on the future of reproductive rights, the American Association of University Women didn't know what to think about him, and there were other questions like that. So my question is, how do we guarantee that you get answers and that the American public get answers from future nominees?
Well, that's the question. What's the answer? Or what is an answer?
I think there should be new guidelines, and I think that the Senate Judiciary Committee, and I agree with many of the comments, that certainly it would be a lot better if there were different representation on that Judiciary Committee, but for now, we've got you. And I think we ought to come up with guidelines that demand that nominees have to answer questions about future issues that affect women, minorities, and all of you in this room.
We're going to take, we're going to, go ahead. You have something that relates specifically to this?
I think so, at least in a pointed way.
And before you do it, Elizabeth Holsman, Ron Brown, that microphone doesn't work anymore. If we can get that hand mic over to you, then we'll come back to you in just a moment. Go ahead.
When we think about the process, let me ask you about the process in the future, and perhaps it reflects on the process in the past. Senator Specter, what would you do? What would happen? What would the Senate do if a month from now or a year from now, you were to learn to your complete satisfaction that Anita Hill's allegations were true?
Once Judge Thomas becomes Justice Thomas by taking the oath, life tenure doesn't attach until then, he'd be subject to removal only for impeachment.
But what would you do? Would you initiate proceedings towards impeachment?
Well, I would like to know a lot more about the facts before I jump into that question.
Let me just ask you a question, though. Isn't it a fact that a justice cannot be impeached for acts that were committed before he was appointed to the High Court?
That is often articulated as a principle, but I do not think that is determinative. We have had impeachment proceedings right here in this room on Judge Hastings, and as Judge Sporkin has said, that is another political issue. It's described, for example, as a high crime and misdemeanor, but it essentially is a political question. I think it would be hard to impeach a sitting justice for something he did before he became a justice, but I do not think it would be impossible under the generalized proposition that it is a political issue for the House on bringing forth the articles of impeachment and for the Senate on voting.
I mean, the issue, of course, would not be the sexual harassment case. The issue would be perjury before the Senate Judiciary Committee.
Well, that also would have taken place prior to the time he became a justice, but I think that it would be reachable under the impeachment process.
Elizabeth Holsman.
I want to express my concern about a process that is not as representative as it needs to be, and many have articulated that. I think as a result of that, the American public was deeply confused about what sexual harassment was all about. There were still people who were confused about why a woman could wait 10 years and why a woman would still continue to have cordial and professional relations with a person who was her harasser. person who was her harasser. These are things that could have been brought out by expert witnesses. Perhaps the committee could have been sensitized, since we're not going to get representation changed on that committee or in the Senate for the next year or so. What can be done is there are two women who serve in the United States Senate. Perhaps they ought to be included on the committee when you consider issues of this kind. If you don't want to include them, at least sensitize yourselves, bring in experts, not only to educate yourselves, but to educate the American public. What concerns me is that perhaps the public has been so confused about sexual harassment now and the process so difficult for the woman who came forward to discuss it, that we may actually have set the clock back on that. We may be discouraging women from coming forward. We may be confusing people about what it's about. I also like to make the point, too, as a former prosecutor, that you can't conduct a serious investigation with an arbitrary time limit. We found that in the Iran-Contra hearings, and I think that's true here. I think the Deputy Director of the FBI said that a different investigation, a more thorough investigation, could have been conducted with a proper amount of time. I'm not saying to drag the proceedings out. Obviously, there's a need for expedition and speed. But I think there's also a need when we confirm, when the Senate confirms someone for the Supreme Court, that a thorough and accurate and careful investigation be done. And I don't think anyone's hands should be tied, and they were tied in this process.
Ms. Leon, you've been standing there for a long time. Go ahead.
I'm a former federal prosecutor myself. And let me tell you something. The process that Judge Thomas, a sitting federal circuit judge, was submitted to here was an unfair process by any standard.
Because?
He didn't have any of the rights or protections that a person would have if an actual criminal charge was being brought against him. He didn't even have the rights and protections that you'd have if a civil charge were being brought against you. And as Senator Simpson has pointed out repeatedly, this wasn't even a charge, by her own admission. Ms. Hill wasn't making a charge against him of any crime or civil complaint even. These were events that took place 10 years ago, and by her own statement, she simply wanted to bring this allegation to the attention of the committee. And yet, despite that, and despite her limited objective, she was dragged into the public. This whole thing was dragged into the public. And the system wasn't designed in such a way, as Senator Simon is suggesting it should be, to handle this kind of allegation or this kind of piece of evidence in a confidential way until the senators have reached a conclusion that there either is something there or isn't something there that merits going forward. What bothers the American people is this man's reputation, which he spent 43 years building, was dragged into the public forum in a TV. And Ms. Hill, who didn't want to go into the public, was dragged into the public for this very person.
So what are you saying? I mean, if on the one hand, we are...
You've got to change the system. That's what I'm saying.
Well, you know, perhaps that is what needs to be done. But if there is a charge of sexual harassment, whether it is brought formally or whether it comes out in the informal fashion in which it did here, are you suggesting that that charge not be addressed?
Ted, what I'm suggesting is that when she made the first allegation of this nature, which was two weeks before an FBI agent was told to look into it, in that two-week period, at the beginning of September, an FBI agent could have been dispatched to look into it. But instead of that happening, staffers on that committee had seven or eight conversations with her over the next two-week period before an FBI agent was sent to look into it.
But you've just heard that the FBI's client is the White House, right? The FBI doesn't work for the committee?
That is not...
She did not...
That's what Mr. Baker said.
She did not want it given to the FBI at that point.
Emma Jordan, you're...
Senator Biden, Ted, could have had the FBI look in it when the allegation was first brought to the attention of a Senate staffer. Senator Biden had the power to do that, and he didn't do it.
Is that right, Mr. Baker?
Yes, it is.
Ms. Jordan, if you'd just give Mr. Baker the microphone for one second, and then I'll give it right back to you.
Yes, that is right. We would be responsive to all sources in the investigation. In other words, if an allegation is brought to us, then it's our responsibility to get the facts behind that allegation.
But in fairness to Senator Biden, the request was initially, she did not want her name used even to the FBI.
Okay. Emma Jordan, you were an attorney working with and for Professor Hill during the hearings.
Well, you know, I think in this process, we've lost sight of what has happened with Professor Hill. And I think one of the questions that clearly needs to be before us tonight is the question of reform so that we can encourage people who have important information for the committee's consideration to come forward. I think that after this spectacle, certainly anybody who's got information that is important and bears clearly on the fitness of a judicial nominee to serve, they are going to be afraid to come forward. So here's what I have to say about how we can reform that. It seems to me that one of the things that Professor Hill had to absorb was the spectacle of political cheap shots in prime time. A senator waving his jacket, saying, there are letters coming over the transom. A senator saying, in the middle of a fact-finding process, that she had committed perjury on the record, making those kinds of statements.
Well, both those senators are here.
Both of them are here.
So what is it you're saying to them?
What I'm saying to them is that we ought to have a confidential procedure because, in fact, the witness was made the scapegoat in this case. She was the target of attacks. The senator sat there with an absolute privilege to make statements that were false, to give innuendo, to practice Soviet psychiatry on this witness. And she had nothing but a Bible in her purse and the truth on her side. And the question that I have is, how do we encourage witnesses to come forward and how do we protect them through the process? I think we've given a number of potential solutions to this. One of them is the solution of a confidential proceeding. There's some disadvantages to that. Judge Sporkin has mentioned the grand jury analog, that potentially the grand jury process might be helpful to us. But I think that when you've got explosive charges like this, sex, race, and all of the issues that we're so divided about, there is no way that the politics will not simply overwhelm the law. And the legal arrangements here were distorted. There were people who said she had the burden of proof. Well, people who have the burden of proof are entitled to arrange their case in an orderly fashion. They're entitled to ask questions. Her lawyers were not permitted to ask questions on her behalf. Instead, we had senators who found themselves in the uncomfortable position of having to ask questions without being properly prepared to do so and to ask questions in a fashion that was somewhat awkward. So the Democrats were left in the position of having to ask questions, not as her advocate. So the witness, I get back to the basic point that I started with. The question is, how do we encourage and protect witnesses in this process? There was no one on that committee. And I'm not, at this point, I'm not talking white, black, or gender. I'm talking about the witness, any witness. The witness had no advocate on that committee. And the process was set up in a way so that deals were being cut at the last minute. Judge Thomas was permitted to start first. And anybody knows, in a legal proceeding, the person who has the assignment of the burden of proof goes forward and gives their testimony in an orderly fashion under cross-examination, and they go first.
When you say, and I am going to give both Senator Spector and Senator Simpson a chance to respond to the charge you made directly against them.
Yes.
But when you say, as you did just a moment ago, the deals were cut, specifically what? What deal was cut?
Well, what I'm saying is that Professor Hill understood that she was to go first. And any legal proceeding that is orderly and conducted with a burden of proof assigned to the person making the complaint, the complaining party goes first. And in this case, Judge Thomas went first. And I think that anybody with any kind of sophistication about how life is conducted in Washington fully understood that the effort to divide the prime-time day so that Judge Thomas was able to get a part of Friday and to double-dip and come back on Saturday and to get Saturday as a part of his delivery of his case to the American people.
Anita Hill was supposed to come back one more time, was she not? That was, I mean, just from watching the televised hearings, she was supposed to come back one more time.
And she was willing and available to come back.
But why didn't she?
Well, you know, one of the questions that we had to assess as we went along in this whirlwind process, and obviously, I'm not free to divulge confidences of advice to my client, but the point I want to make is this. We understood, as we went along, we were assessing our case, the panel of witnesses who were corroborating witnesses were so strong, so clear. And they gave not only corroborating testimony, but they also gave character testimony, about her character. And so it was the judgment that bringing her back to subject her to the waving of the jacket and the cheap shots, that on balance, that wasn't going to be to her advantage.
No, hold on just a second, because we really do have to bring this thing to a conclusion. We've got a few more minutes, and I want to give...
The jacket waiver gets to say something.
I'd like to hear from the jacket waiver.
The jacket waiver. But I think everyone should understand the passion of this lady as the counsel for the witness. So let's get that very clear. That's very important. And Ms. Hill did go first. She went first on Monday in Oklahoma. She went second on Tuesday in Oklahoma. Just, may I please? I listened attentively while you were speaking. And she went again with press conferences. There wasn't really much, there really wasn't much he could do.
But in fairness, Senator Simpson, we were talking about the process.
We are talking about the process. Having press conferences on a Monday and a Tuesday and a Wednesday while a man hasn't even been able to respond, nor could he, until he got to a hearing like this.
Well, but you can have press conferences till the cows come home. But what we're talking about here is that...
But she could have had a chance to come before the committee. Instead, she went back to Oklahoma and had a press conference with no questions. I don't throw anything. I'm not trying to... Let's just stay with it. Let me say this. Imagine the confusion of the committee. When the witness, and don't throw any tomatoes from the back, the witness never alleged that she was sexually harassed by Clarence Thomas. She said under oath that she was not sexually harassed...
That's simply not true.
Just a moment, please.
That's simply not true.
That is, she said it was his behavior.
It's not true.
His behavior is what she wanted examined. Now back, well, you can go look at the testimony.
I was there.
I know, I was there, too. And let me tell you what was flapping through this great crane's pockets. Stuff flying over the transcript from Oklahoma, like from four women lawyers from Oklahoma.
I don't think this ought to be a place to repeat the problem.
Well, see? But they took a statement from a woman...
I don't think you should be permitted to keep this up.
The day before the vote.
Why don't we just stop and have a little civility prevail and move on to the rest of the program?
All of those things... But civility is a two-way street, Bill.
It is. Civility, no, civility is a two-way street.
You betcha.
And I must say that I find myself somewhat despairing in listening to all of you here that anyone is talking to, I mean, that there is sort of an encoding and a decoding of information going on here. You're talking at one another, you're not talking to each other. You're not listening to each other. You're not trying to be responsive. And I don't mean you, Senator Simpson, as distinct from anyone else. I just get the sense that what is wrong with the process here is that it has become so politicized and people are so angry and bitter and hurt that they're just sort of sitting there waiting for the '92 campaign to begin so that they can do it to somebody else.
You betcha.
And Ron Brown, you're standing there, you've been standing there for a long while. Let me give you the last word from the floor, and then we'll allow each of the senators to give a closing comment and say goodnight.
Ted, your final analysis is absolutely right. I think the reason we've had a hard time focusing on process in this particular case is, I think, much more is at stake than that. I think it's our democracy that's at stake. And I think people are very concerned about how our political system is operating this year. We do have a crucial election coming up in 1992, maybe the most important election in the world. We saw what happened in 1988, frankly, the same kind of stuff that we're talking about now. Race being injected, a wedge issue that really tears at the very fabric of America. We've seen it come up again in this particular instance, with race being injected and other things that divide Americans from Americans. We've got to figure out a way to do it better, not only in this process, but in the way we govern ourselves. America's in trouble. People are cynical. They're dropping out of the process. Fewer than 50% of the eligible voters are even bothering to vote for President of the United States. Why? Because we've got all kinds of problems. We've got a decaying infrastructure. We've got a declining economy. We've got working men and women out of work. We've got them scared about their economic security. But we don't have an honest debate about the real issues that are on the minds of the American people because we have constant diversions. Nobody wants to let us talk about sexual harassment. Nobody wants to talk about Clarence Thomas's record. What we want to talk about is issues of character assassination. And I would hope that what has been most instructive and most useful about this are two things. One, that the American people understand something about sexual harassment and what it means not only to the women of America, but to the men of America as well. I hope they understand that we don't have a representative Senate that really reflects the essence of what America's all about. And I hope they understand that we've got to get back to some of this comedy so we can start talking about some of the issues that the American people really care about. How do I make ends meet if I'm a working man and woman in a declining economy? And how do I get an administration that speaks effectively and shows some concern about these issues? So I'm one that maybe is an eternal optimist. I hope that we are so fed up and so disgusted with what we've seen over the last couple of weeks, that we say, let's let the American people have a real dialogue and discussion about what's hurting America and where we need to be going in the future.
Ron, let me ask you, because we need to close in just a couple of minutes. David Gergen is standing behind you, and Mr. Gettystein is standing behind you.
I'd like to say something, really. I'm just standing mine for a little while.
I understand, sir, but I've got, you know, I've got to exercise just some small degree of control. I know I said it was the last, and then someone told me in my ear that there is a proposal that's supposed to be interesting. I haven't a clue what it is, but I know...
Can I make an interesting proposal before he speaks?
No, sir. Ron, if you'd be good enough to hand the microphone to Dave Gergen, and let's see if we can bring this to a conclusion.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me. Ted, Mark Gettystein and I have been sitting here. He worked for Joe Biden. He was counsel for Joe Biden for a good number of years in the committee. I worked for Ronald Reagan in the early part of his administration, and we've both gone on to other lives now. But sitting here, I think both of us felt, you know, is there a way you can build a bridge between the sides here? And I think the thought we both have is that there has been a process in the past that Ronald Reagan actually used in the late '80s. And it's very similar to what Senator Simon has come forward with. We'd like to pose that now and ask if you all could agree on that. Essentially, well, why don't you...
Well, as you're aware, Senator Simon, we did this in the case of the Kennedy nomination, where we had genuine consultations between Howard Baker on behalf of the administration and Senator Biden, Senator Byrd. I'm simply suggesting that we do a similar process with the leadership of the Senate Committee and the leadership of the Senate, in which there are genuine consultations. My thought is that the right ought to back out of the process of pre-selecting judges within the administration. And I think if that happened, the left would back out of the process in terms of attempting to kill nominations. And I think it would restore some civility to the process.
The thought here, to be more specific, is that if the President were to call in some members of the committee and have a list of people of his philosophy, people who share his judicial philosophy, and talk through with members of the committee those nominations, whether he then chose somebody after talking through and having that kind of consultation, having that kind of advice, if the White House would accept that, in turn, would the Democrats accept the notion of ending this assault on character, which so many people on the conservative side have found so objectionable and so degrading?
Let me seize with gratitude upon that proposal, ask each member of this panel to address that proposal, and then we're going to call it a night. Bill Bradley, if we could begin with you.
Well, I think I'll end the way I began, which is that the system works only as long as all the players respect the process. That begins with the President, that begins with the nominee that is candid. A consultation is a good idea. You might have to tell the press to buzz off sometime and go into executive session. And I think finally that the problems in the confirmation process are really reflective of larger problems in the democracy, as Ron Brown said. The fact of the matter is, politicians simply have to be more candid with the American people about where we are, in race relations, in the economy, in a whole variety of issues. And then, frankly, we have to get more people involved in the democratic process through the vote, which means more registration and making sure people participate. And finally, yes, finally, we have to take big money out of politics. If you want to know what I think, those are the things that we need to do to make this system work.
Senator Simon.
Yes. The suggestion that was just made is absolutely sound, with one minor disagreement, and that is, Dave, when you say it should be someone of the President's philosophy. The majority of Republican presidents in this century have appointed justices on at least one occasion who differ from themselves philosophically. At least eight times, we have had nominees of a differing party from the President. So, but what you suggest is basically sound. And second, if I can put in just a note of optimism after the bit, two o'clock in the morning here. I think the nation really has received a partial education in this whole question of sexual harassment. I think that is a real plus. And to those who may be discouraged... And to those who may be discouraged by all the abuse that Professor Hill took, I talked to her on the phone today, I guess it's yesterday now, talked to her on the phone, and she said what has really been unbelievable is this outpouring of support from people all over the country for what she has done. Don't give up, don't get discouraged. We can do better in this nation.
Senator Specter.
Ted, I start by saying in the concluding statement that I think this forum has been very useful. Senator Biden has already said that he's going to have hearings on this subject, and I think a good many good ideas have come out. I think what Dave and Mark have suggested is a good idea to have advice as well as consent in this election. I think that there's outrage about the leaks, and we ought to find out who did it and take appropriate action. I think we can keep the reports more confidential by limiting them to senators alone, with the FBI agents present, so there's no possibility of copying. I think if you have an allegation from someone about sexual harassment, before there's a news conference held, you can have it in executive session. I do not think you can do it afterward, and I think we have learned a very good lesson about trying to do things that are too fast. I started this process when I was asked to do questioning, and I said at the outset that I regarded it as non-adversarial and not as anybody's advocate. I represent a state, and in a broader sense, a constitutional governmental process. And I made conclusions about Professor Hill after her testimony was all finished. I was not happy with what she had said, and I'm not going to summarize the evidence now. I did that extensively yesterday on the Senate floor, and I read over the transcript the next day, and we were sent to find the facts, and it was very unpleasant for Anita Hill to be there, very unpleasant for Clarence Thomas to be there, very unpleasant for our own inspector to be there, similarly for Paul Simon and Alan Simpson and the rest of the people. We didn't want that job, they gave us that job. And we did it too fast, but we did it the best we could, and we were asked to come to conclusions. And I questioned Mrs. Hill, and after I finished, reread her testimony, I came to conclusions, which is what I thought I was supposed to do. But I don't feel good about the whole process, and I think tonight's session is a good one. And Joe Biden, as chairman, is going to convene hearings, and I'll say one final thing: Even the Senate Judiciary Committee on Monday morning finished at 2:00 a.m., which is earlier than you're going to finish, Mr. Copeland.
You're right on that. Senator Simpson.
It was an exhausting and very unpleasant experience. But again, and the reason for that was, is how would you feel if it was happening to you? You activists, you pacifists, you whoever, how would you feel if this was you, whether you were the man or the woman? And then I must say that I really do, it is easy to say and get applause. That's the easiest thing to do in public life today. Grab a microphone, get everybody all worked up, walk away, and then leave it to thoughtful Republicans and Democrats to try to police up after you. That really is destructive of the process. I'm ready to go to work, but there are people in this audience that I've walked up to shake their hands who've turned away from me. That's not the best way to start a process. I'm ready to do that. I pledged to do that. I believe in the United States Senate. I believe in the Judiciary Committee, and I'm ready to do whatever is required. But to say simply that a bunch of 14 people sitting there in pompous ignorance, not responding, not knowing anything, not understanding sexual harassment, when every one of us has a mother, a daughter, a wife in the workplace, and when the staff, and get this, and I'd knock staff around a little, that's something I do, the staff of Joe Biden and the Judiciary Committee are extraordinarily sensitive people, many of them, most of them women. And it's a terribly cheap shot to say that this committee and its remarkable staff doesn't understand sexual harassment. That'll get you a lot of good cut lines in the paper, but it won't sell any because nobody's going to believe it. This is a sensitive group of people who are there to serve the American public, and they do, and do it beautifully.
What about the proposals, Senator?
I'm ready to do those things. I think anything you can do to get, you know, for a white conservative, that to sit and listen to white liberals giving black persons lessons on how sensitive they should be about civil rights is a pretty disgusting operation. That's one place where it's all sick. Listening to that, pointing their fingers, black and white liberals, at Clarence Thomas and saying he wasn't sensitive to civil rights or affirmative action, makes anybody turn off to the process. That's where the baseness of it all is.
Ladies and gentlemen, the hour is late. I think perhaps we have been more successful in illustrating the problems than in producing solutions, but at least there has been a beginning in at least attempting some solutions. I thank all of those here who have been so patient, who have joined us, who have contributed. I thank all of you at home who've stayed with us until this late hour. I'm Ted Copeland, Washington, for all of us here at ABC News. Good night.
To order a video cassette version of tonight's program, use your Visa or MasterCard and call 1-800-ABC-9420. For a printed transcript, send $4 to 1535 Grant Street, Denver, Colorado.
Nightline is a presentation of ABC News. More Americans get their news from ABC News than from any other source.
America's...
More and more people are finding new ways to get rid of their old mattress.
I present... I present...
And with good reason, because Big Sur Water Beds is offering 0% financing for six months. When you step up to the comfort of a Big Sur water bed, you'll pay no interest and make no payments till April of 1992. So give your mattress the old heave-ho and come to Big Sur Water Beds, 3715 Merle Hay Road at Douglas in Des Moines.
This is Mako's Ambassador Paint Service. Just $199. We professionally prepare your car. We...